Select Board meeting for the 15th of September 2021. My name is Pete Pecos and to my right is.
Larry Murphy.
Leslie Matthews.
Martha Taylor.
Emily.
Woody Knight.
Brian Winter.
Great, thanks everyone. We're glad that you're here. And our agenda tonight, just to announce that George Morse will be participating remotely via Zoom. Hello, George. Oops.
Right on cue.
George was there and will be here momentarily, but he went for his mask. Yes, and he'll be back momentarily. And Nancy, Mary Stone will not be with us tonight. So as far as our hearing, we have one public hearing on our agenda, which is scheduled for 7:15. And so until then, I'd like to probably, was there a select board meeting since our last meeting, Leslie?
Last night.
Okay, so do you want to do a quick little select board report?
Okey dokey. Let's see.
Hello, George.
They.
You're muted.
George, you're muted.
I am back.
Perfect, thank you, sir. Okay, thanks, Leslie.
They have a program going on. It's a cybersecurity class. Did you hear anything about that, the cybersecurity class, so that you, if you're getting any emails or anything, so you can recognize what's good and what's bad?
Yeah, we've been actually participating in training for probably over a year now, so we get assignments and then take tests and stuff like that.
The select board was given the opportunity to do it as well. There was a public hearing last night for Blue down at Plum Island for a brand-new liquor license. And they approved it. It's going to be Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. till 2:00 a.m., and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. And then there was a social media policy review, and they went through a whole round of different, what the state has given them and what one of the select board has written up as far as a discussion. They're going to go through it and fine tune that and try to improve how to handle social media so that you don't get yourself in trouble. And that was pretty much the extent of last night.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Leslie. We appreciate you going to the select board meeting. I'm just going to move things around on the agenda a little bit. Martha, you don't have anything under Planner's Report, do you?
Not too much. It does look like the special permit application for the solar project on the landfill is getting nearer to being submitted to us. And our various projects that are under construction are proceeding.
Okay.
So we do have requests for pre-construction conferences for a couple of projects. So that's about it.
Okay, great. So what I'd like to move into is our discussion of our in-person versus a virtual planning board meeting. And just kind of a brief little overview, we've talked about moving into the, back to the Zoom platform for a couple of reasons. One is because of an uptick recently with COVID-2. But from our perspective, we have much more participation from the community with that format, and we discussed that. We've also discussed the ability for applicants to easily submit information, and we can share that information so everyone can see that visually. And then it allows our hearings to continue without absentee or limitation for participation from physical locations. So with that said, I did have a conversation today with the Select Board Chairperson, Alicia Greco, as well as the Town Administrator, Tracy, and we've spoken with our counsel and Brian. If I'm speaking inaccurately, you can let me know. But from my understanding, elected boards can decide to go to a remote platform, a virtual platform, where other boards that are directed under the Select Board are, don't have that ability because we're an elected board, and we've discussed this a couple of times. So I just wanted to do a quick polling of how people felt about that. Woody?
I agree with that. We do get more participation, and it makes it easier for some of the people that can't get out and can't get here or are apprehensive to because of COVID.
All right. George, your opinion on that?
Yeah, I absolutely agree. I thought it was a good way. I had run a program before. All of a sudden, it came back to the old format and it was less enjoyable. I'm sorry.
All right, thank you, George. Leslie?
I think the participation is far greater, and I think the people that do attend via Zoom are more likely to voice their concerns and their opinions and ask questions because they can do it with their name public, that they don't have to actually be there on face. So they feel more comfortable instead of getting up in front of everybody. And you find that a lot of people that, you know, they have their opinion, but they won't, they're very nervous about getting up and speaking in public.
All right. Larry?
No, there's certainly advantages to the Zoom format. I think, if I understood your remarks, Pete, the town is sort of reevaluating where we are right now with COVID and all. I think it would make sense simply to leave it to the discretion of the chair, you know, from meeting to meeting. Now, if we have a, if I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, if there's a continued public hearing, that would have to be announced at the time of the continuance, whether it's.
You would have to announce the date, time, certain, and the location of the meeting, whether it's virtual or in person. Sometimes they've done it in the alternative. That's not really great if there isn't going to be a hybrid meeting. If it's going to be all one or the other, you should just put that on the agenda so there's no confusion. You don't want people to check in the last 48 hours and come here and find out there's no meeting, so.
Sure, sure. But where I was going with that is for a meeting that does not require a public hearing, you know, the decision doesn't have to be made until 48 hours, business hours before. So again, I think it would just leave it to the sound discretion of the chair.
All right.
Would be my suggestion.
Okay, thanks. And in my conversation today with the Town Administrator and the Select Board Chair, we do have some concerns that are starting to just occur within our service area. So I think it would make good sense, Martha, and if it's in agreement with, from your perspective, I'd like to have this board go back to the Zoom platform until we have a better appreciation of what's going on with the health of our community. So I'd like to.
So that would be started with our next meeting, which is in October.
Yep.
Yeah, the chief said last night that they just have reconvened their COVID group to start identifying what's going on.
Right, right. Okay. Would you like to?
I could just reactivate our Zoom length.
Okay.
Use that, because it's set up as a recurring meeting and it's still there, so.
Okay. With that being the case, then that's what we'll do. So that will make that clear, so what we'll, for our continuance, if we have a continuance for tonight, what that platform will look like. Okay, so we have a couple of minutes left. Let's see.
That's about it.
That's about it. Okay. Do we have, we have five minutes. Do we want to talk about our election process?
Sure, if we can do that in five minutes.
Okay. Larry, I'm going to have you kind of head up that conversation.
Well, we've been a crazy year, quite frankly. Normally, I believe we, it's been the practice in the past, Martha, is it not, to usually reorganize in June?
Yeah, it's usually been done either right after the annual town election or else, you know, as of July 1st, after appointments have been made.
So we're already three months into this term, if you will. And frankly, I think Pete, together with Martha, have done a terrific job helping us through this, what's been a really crazy year. And, you know, the foreseeable future is pretty uncertain. I'm perfectly content with the current slate of officers, and I'd be inclined simply to stay with who we have.
Okay. Do you want to do that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, I'll, if no one else has any input.
Then we can discuss it. Yeah.
Yeah, I'd move that we retain the current slate of officers.
Second.
A second, okay. Discussion on the motion. Woody, any discussion?
I agree.
Okay, great. George, any discussion?
No discussion.
Thank you. Leslie, any discussion?
If it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Okay.
No discussion from me.
Okay. Then on the question, how do you vote? Woody?
Yes.
Okay. George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I guess.
And the chair, chair vote?
Chair votes, yes. Okay. So the current slate will stay as they are, and our appointments, do we need to reappoint any liaisons, Leslie? Martha?
It's really kind of an informal relationship. I think if our current liaisons want to continue, then.
Okay.
I'm happy to continue on with the ZBA unless someone else has an interest in it. But I'm fine with it.
Okay. Leslie?
I'll stay with the Select Board.
Woody, what are we going to do?
I don't know. Is there anything for me to do?
Martha, what can we do with Woody?
Have any suggestions?
Yeah, okay, we're going to find something. Just hold on here, we have 30 seconds. I'm sure we'll come.
I'm open, I'm open to fill in a position in the future. We don't have time to discuss it now.
Does the Council on Aging have a liaison?
Not from the Select Board. I mean, not from, not from the Planning Board.
Just wondering because since there's been a lot of discussion on the possibility of a new location or a new building, that would be something that the Planning Board may have some interest in.
No, that's certainly a consideration, yeah.
All right. Well, we are going to find something and we are going to create something. So as they say, be careful what you ask for.
Yes.
Okay. Then we don't have to do any signatory changes then, if I understand that correctly.
And right now, you and Larry are the two signatories, and so if there's no change, then I would say that that remains in effect. I'll check with Eileen to see if that needs to be sort of reconfirmed annually or if the previous vote holds.
Okay, great.
But for now, we'll say it stays.
All right, well, we're getting through business here. That being the case, I think we have two minutes until we hit 7:15. Is there anything, Martha, that you need to discuss?
I can't think of anything right now.
Larry?
No.
Leslie?
No.
Woody? George, any discussion until we have our two-minute warning? Or until we get, actually, we have one minute and counting now before our public hearing. George?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, do you have any comments? We have one minute before our public hearing starts.
I have no comments.
Beautiful, thank you. All right. One minute, folks, and we'll be there. All right, I have 7:15 compliments of my timepiece here, my phone. At this time, we'd like to continue our public hearing. This is a Open Space Residential Development, OSRD, special permit application 105 High Road, MAP R 48, Lot 49, applicant DePiro LLC, owner Mitch Manten, formerly author, and Sandra Costanas. Let's see. Brian, we kind of did a conversation on our last meeting. Do you have anything new to add to that, or do you want to give our oversight, kind of a?
No, nothing new to add to it, although there's been some more correspondence, but maybe, I think everyone's heard my introduction, but not all at once. So I think people have heard it at different times in different places, but let me just say maybe a couple of sentences. As you know, prior to the last meeting, and this is going back to July 21st, Ms. Taylor and I were tasked with writing a decision, so the board had something to consider. And the way we had envisioned that decision to work mechanically was a two-step process, which you'll see, you know, your bylaw contemplates in, for most applications, where the special permit issues, and then there's a second round, a subdivision application. So we put that together, and there was a meeting where the board started to provide some comment, and we went back to start working on it. Well, the board continued for about, I don't know, close, roughly two months for us to finish that process. And in the meantime, Attorney Mann and her team continued working on the project, and they continued doing some design review and engineering review. And Attorney Mann came back with another version of the decision that, in essence, condensed the entire thing into one process, this process. So rather than a two-step where there's another public hearing, everything, you know, in theory, could be done in this public hearing. So because we had an extended period of time between that meeting and what's now this meeting, there was a whole series of correspondence exchanged between Joe and Steve. You've seen it going back from, you know, August 8th to 30th, September 7th, September 10th, and I think the most recent one is today, September 15th, really vetting out a lot of that engineering and design review stuff. So you have all that, although you haven't met as a board to consider it yet. So what is now in front of you, I guess, is going to be sort of two choices, and you'll have to decide what direction you want to go in after getting through the public hearing this evening. And one is, do you want to stick with the two-step process? And is there any value, is there anything left we haven't talked about that would get explored at a second public hearing? Or after hearing from the engineers and looking over the correspondence and hearing from the public, do you think we've really captured it all now? And, you know, after looking at Joe's comments, do you think we've actually checked out those boxes? In which case, we could just do a one-step decision and just finalize the special permit with all the design and engineering just boiled into that. So both those decisions exist. They're, you know, 90% done, they're ready to go. We just need the board's direction on how to wrap this up. So that's the stage we're at, and that's the task in front of you tonight.
Well, thank you, Brian. Appreciate that overview once again. That being the case, does anybody have any questions for Brian? George, do you have any questions for Brian?
No.
Great. Woody, do you have any questions for Brian?
No.
Larry?
No.
And Leslie?
No.
Okay, great. That being the case, I'd like to give the applicants an opportunity to kind of update us as to where they are with regards to the project and the site plan, and I don't know who's going to speak. Okay.
So good evening, Jill Mann here on behalf of Farah Property, the applicant in connection with the OSRD, this is before this evening. Your opinion is Steve Sawyer from, no longer DCI, but?
It's a subsidiary.
DCI, a subsidiary there. So over the past couple of months, we've actually refined the plan. We have submitted stormwater, we have submitted good grading, we submitted screening, and we have provided, you know, all of the requirements pursuant to that particular bylaw section. It's our position that it would be best served to actually allow the permit to be condensed because there truly is nothing remaining to be done. The individual homes, as they are being constructed, will be resubmitted to the Department of Planning and the Building and Spectral Review to ensure that the grading plans mesh and everything else is essentially completed. The locations of the open space, locations of the septic, et cetera. And then we did also, if you recall, discuss that provision relative to the open space, who is going to own. And then Mr. Winter and I worked on that language about, you know, there should be something definitive so that there's no, oh, who's responsible? And I believe Attorney Winter put that language in so that we know that once the decision's issued, it immediately goes to the Conservation Commission for that to be contemplated. And I'm not, I don't remember who's, is, Mr. Pecos, are you the liaison for the ConsCom? Okay. So it'll then go to that board, and there'll be discussion relative to the ownership of the open space, which in any event will still have the conservation restriction which is provided for in that decision. Other than that, I mean, I've seen the various comment letters, I've read everything, and it's the same questions that continue to be raised. I will suggest to this board that the yield has been set, we had that determination, it was vetted during a public hearing repeatedly. And I think that that issue has probably, for the most part, been put to bed despite some consternation in some of the correspondence received. Joe Sawaka, as referenced by Ms. Taylor, as well as Mr. Pecos, and by Attorney Winter, did submit today a final plan, I mean, a final comment letter, which basically confirmed that we had provided him with all of that information that he was seeking, because at the last hearing, there was still a little bit of leftover stuff that we needed to wrap up with him, and it was continued anyway. So we have wrapped that up, and he has issued to you that final letter. If you have any questions for me or for Steve?
Actually, I could just chime in briefly, Steve Sawyer, so I can consult, so it's a GM company. So as far as the detailed design, over the past couple of months, there were a couple submissions made with review from Joe. I think the last letter, although not crystal clear, he's not always very concise, but that we've addressed all the issues. Really, the only item is that the homes that are shown on the detailed plan, granted they're, they will be, they're not the exact home that's going to be built on that, these are going to be all custom homes. So what I think, what he recommended was a site plan for each building permit application with detailed grading to be submitted to make sure that the grading patterns match what's on the OSID. And we have no issue with that. And also, if the board conditions that Joe, just to make, you know, he's most familiar with the drainage and been peer reviewing the drainage, have no issue with him reviewing each building permit site plan application that comes in to make sure it conforms with the, with the stormwater. But I think other than that, we have pretty much vetted out all questions and review comments.
Super. You know, I think would be helpful, Steve, do you have a board with the current detailed site plan that's kind of the final site plan? It would just be helpful for the board to see it, and if they have any.
There's actually a landscape plan, which is a little, this is the landscape plan that was submitted with the detailed site plan. So we have, you know, as from the beginning, we have the driveway access with the crushed sea shell to the parking in the rear, the area in the septic system, the stormwater system is in this location. So as far as the stormwater system, this is actually, it's a bioinfiltration area. It'll be, you know, very subtle, like a three to four to one slope down into it. It's going to be basically the same field material as, it'll blend right in with the surrounding high grass field. So really, you won't even notice it. It'll just look like a depression out there that will fill with water. And given the sandy materials, it'll drain, you know, it'll drain very rapidly, probably within hours of any major storm event.
You should describe that fence.
Oh, yeah, so I think, so we are six-foot-high flat top fence on this, on the north property line, with a full hedge of arborvitae to screen the, all the development in the homes from the farm operations to the north. So that was, I think that was a request, a request from Matt at the, I think it was a month or so ago. So we added, here's a section of it. So we have the property line, the seven-foot easement, which he's currently using, and then we have, we have three feet, an extra three feet to the fence, that's where the solid fence will be, then the five foot with the arborvitae, and then the swale inside of that.
So for.
So we provide a robust buffer between these four homes.
Okay, so for clarification purposes, the fence that will be positioned will be three feet from the seven-foot right-of-way. So there'll be no interference with the right-of-way. And then there'll be the six-foot fence, three feet from that right-of-way, and then arborvitae?
Yes, then arborvitae on our side.
The fence.
So there's no, you know, there's no interference with the farm operations.
Okay, and then from the arborvitae will be the swale, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And what's the width of that swale now?
It's only six feet. It's just going to be very subtle, it's only six by eight inches deep, six feet, you know, just enough to convey. It's really on that back edge, it's not, given the sandy materials and the lawns, is very, very minimal runoff. But it's enough just to convey, you know, it'd pretty much blend in with the lawn, but just enough to convey the water down gradient.
Okay, and what you're depicting next to the six-foot fence are the arborvitae? So are you planning to put in mature arborvitae that are going to be at least eight foot tall? Is that what I'm catching?
I believe they're six, six foot.
So they're a little bit higher than the fence?
Around the same height as the fence. They'll grow, typically, they grow very rapidly.
As you're looking, what will the spacing of those arborvitae be?
Uh.
Do you have a call-out for those yet?
Well, he has a call, he has 97 of them.
97.
You can see right here, the distance.
Yeah, no, yeah, it's 97.
Okay.
And right now, he hasn't set it, he said, you know, it's a six-foot-high fence, he hasn't planted it five, four to five-foot height.
Okay.
Starting at four to five feet.
Beautiful. And just for clarification, where the fence begins, it looks like it's going to be the curvature of the entry driveway?
Yes.
Now, is there going to be anything from that close point, is there going to be a fence or a rail post?
Actually, there's a decorative type, decorative wall.
Wall, okay, so there'll be a wall there?
Yeah.
Okay, and how high will that wall be?
I believe it's only two feet.
Okay.
Two-foot-high wall.
All right.
And then I'll, there'll be some planting here, but, yeah, there's a, so there's a, you know, a distinct, you have the wall here, and then the fence launches here.
And the intent, would the intention be to have stones from the property utilized for that?
I think it's, it's just going to be a stone veneer cast in place, cast in place stone veneer.
Okay, all right. All right, so that's helpful, that we can see that there's going to be now a fence, there's going to be arborvitae, there's going to be a three-foot distance from the right-of-way, and then the swale, which would be six foot.
Yeah.
All right. Let's see, I want to ask Martha. Martha, do you have any questions or comments, or from Joe's perspective, from that?
Not from Joe's perspective. I think, you know, Steve has already touched on the biggest concern, which was the grading of the individual, you know, house exclusive use areas, if that's what I may call them. So, you know, I think that's been addressed in Steve's response and can certainly be conditioned, I think, in the decision as well. But I do have a couple of other questions.
Sure thing, please.
So my understanding is there's a new fence that's going up basically all along where the, where the houses are going to be, and then there's an existing fence, a little bit, just kind of jogs a little to the south of that, in the open space.
The existing one in the open space?
Right, but on the north side.
I think that's already been ripped out.
Okay. I thought on the drawing was showing that where the new stockade fence ends, that there's an existing fence along the north that jogs down.
That's down, that's down in this area, there's a existing, that's an existing, I think it's wooden wire fence, it's around the old track.
Okay, so the intention is that that will stay?
That'll stay, yeah. And that's in the high, that's kind of set off in the higher, higher lawn, the higher meadow area.
Mm-hmm.
So this would be the area that would be mowed more frequently, where this would be allowed to grow as a meadow. You know, so there'd be really no, it'd be a distinct buffer here where people really don't typically walk and, you know, always eat on the high grass.
Right, right. Now, I know there was some concern raised at a previous meeting about, about those meadow plantings and the possibility, you know, sometimes they just end up going to weed and the possibility that they could actually impact the farming land on either side.
Yeah, so that's actually, it's a native meadow mix, it's a native orchard meadow mix. I think on research, we, it's called out as the orchard meadow mix, which I believe is what the grass is at, upon research, is what they're, the grass is, I guess, on the colby.
Jason's apartment.
Yeah. I think Mark could talk to somebody on that.
There is a separation between the properties, because you have that, that seven-foot easement area on both sides, and it's basically gravel. So they're not going to transfer via root system?
And it's a, I guess that's a type of, that's a type of hay, my understanding is a type of hay.
So Martha, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask to direct this to Woody, because I think, Woody, you brought this up, so if you have concerns with that, do you want to kind of bring those out now?
No, I agree with the, what you have now, the orchard mixture, pasture mixture, because if you were to put like a pollinator, like a butterfly garden, as they call them, or something similar to that, you get like the lazy-eyed Susans and the, and some of those other grasses, and they spread like wildfire. And milkweed, too, and it just ruins a hayfield. And with that beautiful hayfield that they have on, once on the south side of the plant that abuts that, you watch it spread as, as the time goes on. So that was my concern, because you grow that, you grow that up. So, that was my concern because you grow that, you grow that up and it'd be more of a wild thing. It'd be great for butterflies and pollinators, but it, it will harm the hayfield adjacent to it.
Actually, we use that, you know, there's no farming around the new report project down the golf course. And we use that meadow mix, you're right, the black ones, the black eyed, whatever, the black eyed Susans, those things spread. They're really, really robust, they really came in hard and strong.
And it grows wild quick.
Yeah.
And as far as, I believe I read on the plan somewhere too, that you were proposing bimonthly mowing of that area? Or a particular area there?
I think, no, the bimonth, I think the bimonthly is in the low area. And up here, it's, I think, annual.
Okay.
Or I think we're calling it as annual.
But that, that would prevent, if it wasn't that pollinator mix like I had seen on a previous plan, it, it should stay a hayfield as opposed to hayfield type grass as opposed to weeds or whatever you want to call it.
Thanks, Woody. Martha, back to you.
Those were, well, just one other thing which I've mentioned to Steve. I think my reading of the bylaw is that bio, or retention ponds and detention ponds actually don't count as part of the open spaces. It's in a huge area, but I would say this probably qualifies as, as a retention pond. So, that area should be taken out of the calculations.
Yeah, it was actually noted on, like, you know, it was noted on that open space plan that with, I think with it was seventy-four, without it was six point seven or something like that.
But I think for purposes of the decision, we'll need to have the square footages. So, if you can give that, that would be great, thanks.
Very good.
So, as far as the plantings, do you want, should that be a condition, Martha? Or some sort of, you know, surveillance program to make sure that that doesn't change as time goes along?
Well, my understanding is that all of that, the maintenance of that area would be really in an open space management plan and should be codified in, in that kind of a document. Attorney Winner may have some other thoughts on that.
No, that'll all have to be incorporated and submitted too, so it'll get baked in, if you will.
Great, let me see if any board members have any other questions. Larry, do you have any questions?
Just for Steve, so, and well, directed to Martha. So, Martha, we feel that, you feel that you've got the issues of the swales and the exclusive use areas covered adequately.
Yeah, I mean.
They've met Steve's, I'm sorry, Joe's concerns.
Yeah, I mean, Steve's response has been that those plans will be submitted and that the intention is that they be consistent with what's being provided. So, you know, we will need to get those, that should be a condition of the, of the decision. We'll need to get those and give them to Joe for review.
Every time we apply for building permit, we submit that detailed plan.
There also seem to be in the correspondence back and forth, some, some issue around lighting, especially up on, on High Road. And also identifying the plantings that were just conceptual and those that, that were to stay, where we are on those issues.
I think what it is, the plantings around the perimeters are to stay. And each lot, this is a, each lot is basically is an example. Because you really, you don't know what people like or dislike around, around each, each home. But as far as that, the street trees and then the perimeter planting.
And the lighting?
Lighting, we're not proposing, and I don't think, it's funny, I think in the last few subdivisions I've submitted, we never, there's no lighting been proposed. I think in the last two, Coleman and also down on, the one down on High Road, there was no lighting with those subdivisions. So, it seems as if we're going away, away from formal streetlights and you just put a post light out in the front yard. Actually, that, you know, way back when, when I lived at Old Farm Way, that was, that was how it was handled, is this post lights off the driveway. I think it's part of the whole dark sky, you know, dark sky compliance.
Yeah, what's a little different here, and I don't know if it's.
Actually, there is a, there is a street light here and it's actually a overhead light here and here.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, in this particular location, you got a lot of traffic though from the farm stand, you know, across the way.
Yeah, that typically closes at seven, I guess it's dark in the, it's dark in the winter, maybe. Well, I'm not sure how late they're open in the winter. I know typically summer is seven PM is their hours. So, it's still light during their operations. I imagine in the, in the winter, it probably gets dust, it's probably dusky. I believe they're, it may be open until seven during the winter also. So, you do have a couple hours in the evening, I guess, at that time. You know, it's.
Not sure where we're left, but, you know, with that. Martha, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but do you think the lighting, what they're proposing is adequate there?
My feeling is that not having streetlights there is fine. And I'm sorry, where, so are you proposing one at the entrance?
We are not. I guess one thing if, you know, one thing if it were, if the board would prefer, we could place one light, you know, place a light at the entry, you know, one light at the entry. Could condition that, you could, we could set one, set one right here at the entry. You know, I don't think we'd want to do a high cobra, cobra style. It'd be more of a decorative style, maybe twelve to fifteen feet high, cut off fixture. So, that'd be more ornamental, but would throw, would throw enough light at this entry here. If that's, if the board, the board desires.
I don't know, what do you think? Anybody else?
I think one light at the entry at least notifies people in advance where the development is on a dark night.
Actually, is there going to be a sign, an illuminated sign?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah, yeah.
And where's that going to be?
I believe it's right, it's right here.
With illumination or without illumination?
I think it was without illumination. That was without.
Yeah, I, I think it probably would be prudent to have something up there. It doesn't need to be a huge spotlight.
We can amend the plan to add that, without note.
Yeah.
George, do you have any questions as to what's been presented with this, with the revisions to the site plan?
Yes, I just want to ask again about the grass mixes. Will there be any flowers of any type that would toss out seeds in the wind to affect those hayfields?
No.
No, okay, thank you. I just didn't catch that aspect. I know there was some concern the last time we talked. Thank you for taking care of that.
Thank you, George. Leslie?
My questions have been answered.
Woody?
I think a good, that's, now that we've talked about lighting, there, there may be a need for something there. If you have someone that, a delivery driver or something like that in the evenings that need to find that, the roadway. I don't know, there was just an accident in front of Tendecrop the other day, so it happens and during the daytime and things happen. But maybe some sort of illumination there where your sign is or at the entryway of the road would help. But Tendecrop does a pretty good job across the street of illuminating their area when they're open, so.
Anything else?
No, no, good.
So, we see the parking area that's going to be for public access is, yeah, if you could just, yeah, point that out. And how many spots would that be for?
I believe it's six.
Six, okay. And I can't tell from this perspective, do you, do you identify the trail, or right, trail heading out to the back and crossing over that wet area?
Yeah, it's on, it is on another sheet, shown on. We do show it on, we do show it on two point, G two point one three, we do show the trail. Crossing, crossing and looping.
And I know that we've had lots of different iterations of the project. Is there going to be a bridge or a walkway placed over the wetland area?
The plan is just a, it's kind of like, it's going to be a walking, sort of, like a hiking trail bridge. No, no, it's not going to be a formal elevated bridge we'd be looking to do. You know, when you're, if you're like hiking up one of the trails in the White Mountains, a lot of times, they take a log and split it and then you set it up so you get a flat, a flat elevated area. It's usually about, I don't know, a foot and a half wide that you can, you walk across and you saw cut it, something like that or, or that, just some sort of cedar plank.
So, that's what you're, your bog bridge that you're describing? Okay, great. And would that bog bridge have traction on top of, like, you know, like you say?
It would be an X cut. Either you saw cut it like, X cut like they do up in the Whites, or we'd put some sort of skid resistance.
Or a wire mesh or something, yeah.
Not smooth, pressure treated, we.
Okay.
I went for a ride. I did my bike shoes, taking my bike out of the shed before did I go down there.
Alrighty, and the trails that are depicted on G two point one three is what we can anticipate?
Yes.
And you'll be developing those?
Yes. The trails themselves are just going to be very simple, just going to be sort of rake the forest mat, you know, rake the forest mat and either throw down some, either some wood chip or, or something to that, that it's going to be a, you know, basically a hiking trail.
Great, and there should be no tree removal with that process, right?
We'd wind up, we'd wind our way through. There might be some brush removal in the thick areas, but we wouldn't be taking any, any large trees. We'd just be winding our way around.
Alright, so I see two proposed bog bridges, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that tight little area where the drive comes close to, does the fence run the entire length? Or is that going to be stopping?
It's stopping at the, right at the wall.
Right at the wall, okay, great, 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 okay. And so, that's the closest point that you come to that, that easement, okay. But not penetrating onto it.
No, no.
The concept of, I know that we don't have the actual homes because we're just kind of looking at, you know, potential footprints. But the concept of pools in the back, is that kind of gone away now?
There may be, depending if the house shrinks, you know, if the house is smaller and there's room, there may, there may end up being a pool in the back. It'd be up to each individual homeowner.
Okay, so for like one and two, it's pretty close to the swale?
Yeah, you know, I imagine that, you know, when we come in with the final plan, they may slide forward and tilt a little bit. Give a little more room in the back. Depends what, you know, how they, what each, you know, what each person desires. Some people don't really care for a backyard, they just want a patio, you know, private patio and they want more space away off the street or how that works out. Yeah, you know, it could be, you know, it could be two or three pools down there.
Okay, and for six, for six, seven, eight and nine, there, there's no proposed buffer to the south, is that right?
Yeah, right now, over the years, that's, there is a fairly robust, it's probably about, I don't know if it's from farming. There's a, I think they ended up just rake or sort of till the rocks. There's a little bit of a rock, a heavy brush and rock area along this property line. So, you step, when it happens, you end up stepping up on it. So, the, there is a fair amount of trees clustered running along there along with brush in between. So, we're not, we're not proposing any buffer. There is a fairly, fairly robust natural buffer there at that location currently.
So, that's what is described as the one to two foot high existing berm?
Yeah.
That will maintain itself, right?
Yeah, we didn't really notice, you know, when we went out to go and get a handle of the trees, you really didn't see it just because of the growth, the brush, you know, when you walk in there, you'd step up on the, up on the berm.
Those are the questions I had. Martha, do you want to comment on Joe's letter at all that we haven't touched upon in any submissions we've had?
Yeah, and actually, I have one more question, if I may.
Sure.
I'm just looking at the landscape plan. I just wanted to make sure all the, in the plant schedule, all of those are native species, no, no invasives?
I believe, yeah, I believe, I'm not a landscape architect, but I believe the direction was for all native.
Alright, yeah, if you can, if you can confirm that, that would be good.
Either confirm and also condition.
Yes.
Yes, yeah. So, and as far as, as Joe's comments are concerned, you know, as Attorney Winner noted previously and also Attorney Mann, there's been quite a back, back and forth between Joe and Steve regarding the technical aspects of, of the site plan. And, you know, I believe between Steve's last response letter and then Joe's letter, all of, all of the concerns have been addressed and, and, you know, can be addressed as conditions as well. And I, you know, have asked him several times, have not gotten any indication that there's any information that he feels is missing that should have been provided.
Is it your sense that, that he has provided the same depth of review as he would if we had gone through regular subdivision?
Yeah, I think he's been, I think he's been pretty, pretty detailed.
He's been very thorough.
Is there anything else to learn if, from a subdivision application, for example?
Yeah, I, I asked him that, you know, I asked him if there was anything that he would have expected to see in a subdivision application that wasn't here. And, you know, he, he felt satisfied.
Yeah, we provided all, you know, typically you get a profile, provided the plan and profile. Pretty much what, what is typical of a definitive subdivision, we provided with this detailed plan. It's that we kind of mirrored what, what typically is submitted, other than the lotting plan, other than a survey lotting plan.
What about things other than the technical aspects, for example, performance guarantee, that type of thing? That's something we would normally address through a subdivision application. Sorry if I'm getting ahead of you one moment.
No, no, no. Well, it also gets addressed as a site plan as well.
Okay.
So, you know, I think, I think that would be part of, part of the decision.
Thanks for that question, it's helpful. Yep, good. Martha, did you have any correspondence that you wanted to comment upon or any names that need to be added to our list?
So, we did get, over the past couple of days, we've received in addition to Joe's, well, since, since the last, well, since these weren't ready the last, last time, since June twenty-third, we've received email correspondence from Donald Cornone, Gary Brown, Adam Timothy, another from Gary Brown, Catherine O'Brien, another from Adam Timothy, and Bonnie and Christopher Simpson. And there are actually two from them that came in today. You received the last one around six.
People have the opportunity to receive, to review that six o'clock one. It's coming a little bit late, but I'm sure that that can be reviewed. Okay, good. Okay, at this point in time, I'd like to invite any, anyone from the public to provide an opportunity to speak. We're looking for any new information or new comments to this discussion that could help this, this board. And we have heard a lot of comments over the past, the past months and years. So, if there's any new information or new comments that would be helpful to this board, please feel free to come up and address the board. You'll need to identify yourself, name and address, come on up.
Thank you. First of all, I've never seen this.
Name and address, please, just for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Catherine O'Brien, one oh three High Road, Newberry. So, I haven't had a chance to look at this at all and verbal description, when you can't see it and you have a verbal description, it's very difficult to understand. So, that's number one. But my mail, my real question is twofold. Number one, did you all read the letter that I wrote that was sent in yesterday?
I think everyone had an opportunity to review, yep.
I'm sorry?
I think everyone had the opportunity to review it.
Okay, so then you know that at the last meeting, well, not the last meeting because it was postponed, but the meeting before that, I had done a presentation on the yield. And at that time, it was determined that it would be discussed at the next meeting, which is this meeting. And I wrote that in the letter as well. And I have a very serious concern because I've reviewed every single tape for the last almost two years now. I've reviewed every one of them, not once, but twice. There is no mention of how the yield was defended. There is no mention of how the yield was defended by the proponent using the rules and regulations of these, of this group. And that is required. Um, and I put that in my last presentation with the chapter and the sections. And, um, I'll just read it for you again, the proponent. I'll go back to this page first. The proponent is required. The proponent shall have the burden of proof with regard to the basic minimum number of lots resulting from the design. I'm sorry, I have very bad throat today. I hope you can hear, can you hear me? If you don't, if you can't hear me, I'll take my mask off. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. So the proponent shall have the burden of proof with regard to the basic maximum number of lots resulting from the design and engineering specifications shown on the yield plan. The yield plan submitted by the applicant, Mr. Manten, shows four. And that's been accepted by the planning board, that that is correct. The applicant is asking for ten, and you can call them condominiums if you want to, but ten single family homes from a yield of four. Now, if you can show me where that yield was discussed, I would love to know. Because every meeting was recorded and not in one. It's been referred to, it's been talked around, uh, in December, when I brought this up again about the yield. Mr. Pecos' comment was that he was going to, and his exact word was task, the three attorneys, Mr. Weiner, Mr. Miss, uh, uh, Mann, and, um, Miss Mead to determine the yield. But that, that's not their job to determine the yield. But they didn't do it anyway, because in, they were supposed to come back in January, according to the tapes. Come back in January and present the determination. They did not, because in January, the meeting was postponed, and the next meeting was February. And the yield was never mentioned. The only time the yield was mentioned at another time after that was at, at a hearing when, not me, some other gentleman said, "You've never discussed the yield." And Mr. Pecos' answer was, "Oh yeah, but it's been vetted and vetted to death." Now, I understand that not everyone may have that same interpretation that it's been vetted to death. And I, I, I don't believe it has been vetted. And I'm not trying to be in the least bit argumentative or insulting to you, but that is the whole crux of this issue. None of these other things, the bushes, the plants, the flowers, just as an aside, there's been invasive plants down back there on that property since Mr. DePiero dumped his, some stuff down there, and it's, it's very, very invasive, just as an aside. But that doesn't matter. The only thing that matters is, the yield has never been vetted. And the proponent needs to defend, it's, it is his burden of proof. Now, those are not my words, those are words from your bylaws, yours, the planning board's bylaws. Applicant has the burden of proof, not the, not the attorneys, not, not me, and not you. And that has never, ever been done. And I, I would like to just continue reading that, uh, uh, chapter one, one twelve dash five, uh, number s- well, actually, this is number six. The proponent should refer to and limit his proof to those facts in the zoning bylaws and the rules and regulations of the town of Newbury when responding to his burden. And that is, Newbury chapter bylaw, chapter one te- twelve dash five, one. I'm citing these because I don't want you to think I'm making these up. These are in your rules. And right underneath it, it says, "No approval should be issued without this important rule completed by the proponent." Now, I understand that these people have done some wonderful designs and a lot of work, and I wish they had just gone and done the first step first. Because if they had done the first step first, none of this expense would have happened. None of these plans would be here. And so, because that hasn't happened, all of these niceties and the, the, um, attention to certain details, the plants, the little bridges, the three raised birdhouses. I mean, that's just smoke and mirrors, really. And, um, so I'm sorry for that, that, that this wasn't begun with a firm foundation. Pardon, pardon, pardon. Well, it should have had a firm foundation, and it should always have had the proponent. And never forget, Mr. DePiero is not the proponent. The owner of the property is Mr. Mitchell Manten. He lives in Atlantic City, New Jersey. So if you are considering that this might be a nice project for Mr. DePiero, I'm sorry that you may feel that way, uh, you shouldn't be feeling that way. It, it should be just like anybody else coming in. And, um, I, I, I'm not feeling that that is the case. It should be completely independent, and it should be unbiased. And you should be able to listen to a woman who knows the rules and regulations, maybe better than most in here, I don't know, without bias and without discrimination. And I feel that, um, my personal sense is, from watching the dismissive attitude on the, on the, um, the recordings, that I'm, I'm hoping that you will do the right thing. I'm hoping that you will look into your heart and realize that this has been wrong from the beginning, and that you will not just say to yourself, "Well, oh, they put a lot of time and energy, money into it." Well, they shouldn't have. They knew from the beginning. And you have known from the beginning that one lot equals one structure. One lot, doesn't matter the size of the lot, it can be ten acres. It's still one structure. And it doesn't mean that just because the lot size that's been engineered has been sixty thousand square feet, which, which could hold a duplex. But you can't take that duplex and say that it's two single homes, because a two-family is only owned by one person. That means one dwelling. That means one structure. And so, uh, basically, that's what I am appealing to you for. Uh, the zoning bylaw, chapter ninety-seven, section three A one reads, "In all zones where allowed, except for shopping centers, farms, industrial complexes, community facilities, and public utilities, only one principal structure shall be permitted on each separate lot." These aren't even separate lots. I mean, I'm not gonna speak to that, because there's so many things I could criticize on that. I, I haven't even looked at that plan, but I could pick it apart in a heartbeat if I, if I wanted to. I don't wanna do that. I wanna go back to the rules. I wanna go back to what is written in the bylaws, your bylaws. And I am hoping that you will take it upon yourself to do the right thing. Don't just slide this through because they've done so much work and it's all done, and, and the decision has been made about, you know, more light pollution and what kind of seed you're gonna put in the, in the field. This is, this is very important. And I think if you don't take your own bylaws very seriously and agree to abide by them, then you have to look into your own heart to see if you're, if you are doing what you were elected to do, which is to protect the interests of the people based upon these bylaws. So that's all I have to say. Do you have any questions for me?
Uh, I don't have any questions, thank you.
What else? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address this board this evening with any new information? Okay, thank you, um. Do we have any questions from board members? Woody? Larry?
Uh, at this point, no.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Leslie?
No.
Okay. Uh, George, any questions at this time?
No questions.
Wonderful, um, great. Does the applicant have any additional comments? No? Okay, great. Okay, Brian, so you kind of summarized what our, what our, our, our options are here, whether we have, we look at a one-step process or a two-step process. And I think Larry, you had asked a question which was directed to Martha. Would Joe, would Joe have any additional comments or questions if this was, um, a subdivision construct versus what we've had today?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and Martha's response was that, pretty much, it's been, that has been, those concerns would have been addressed with what's been reviewed.
Right.
So.
Actually, Steve, I gotta have a couple of questions for Attorney Mann.
Please, please go ahead, yeah, yeah.
I'd just like to better understand the applicant's position regarding the requirement. As, as you know, I'm sure you've, you've spent a lot of time with it. The bylaw seems to contemplate a two-step process. One first is the OSRD, um, inquiry to see if, you know, this is the preferred use of the property rather than a conventional subdivision. And then it anticipates that there'll be a subdivision review. Um, this is a little bit different, because it's a condominium, and I get that. Um, is it the applicant's position that we do not have the jurisdiction to require you to file under subdivision control? Or would it require, or is it a question of just waiving that provision?
It's my position that you, we are, we are able to elect. So when you look at, when you go through the provisions of the bylaw, it's actually up to the applicant whether or not they want to do a subdivision, or if they want to actually have what they call congregate living, which is the, the condominium. Um, many, many OSRD plans, that is the way it works. You have that option as the applicant as to how you want to do it. Um, many, many times, if you end up doing the definitive, some, um, developers will opt to do that, because they want to transfer the obligation to maintain the roadway to the town. Um, and then those who want to kind of keep it tight and want to do it all themselves, because they feel like they can better maintain it, um, will actually elect to do this condominium for them. So I do both all of the time. But it is my opinion that your bylaw actually, um, I don't have the provision in front of me, I apologize. But there's a provision in the bylaw that specifically says that it is at our election which, which type we would do.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, between a condominium rather than a conventional.
Right, whether or not we would submit to subdivision control, basically.
But you could, I think you can still, and I'm, I'm not, I'm just trying to understand your position.
Please.
So is it your understanding that, or opinion, that this plan does not describe a subdivision?
Yes.
Okay, now suppose the open space were broken off as a separate lot. Wouldn't that qualify then under the definition of subdivision?
No, because I actually had that discussion with Attorney Winner, and I can create an A and R plan, so an approval not required plan, because we're not intending to actually use the open space as a buildable lot. So you just simply have the access over that, um, may I, I'm just gonna, so you actually would have the access here? We would literally just cut it, make an A and R.
Okay.
And because it's not buildable under the rules, I'm, I'm actually okay, as long as I burden the plan with that. Because a subdivision is actually, the legal definition is the creation of two separate lots. And the reason why you have to submit to subdivision control is because you have to demonstrate adequate and appropriate access with utilities. So it's really a public health issue.
Alright, and lastly, do we have discretion as a special permit granting authority as a condition of the special permit to require, um, filing consistent with the subdivision control law?
In my opinion, you do not. To require it, you do not.
As a condition of the special permit?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And just to follow up, so would you just kind of describe, when you were pointing at the, uh, the sheet, the A and R would include the retention ponds and the septic area?
We would actually exclude them.
Okay, so we've, we've.
So we actually had to develop two separate open space.
Okay.
However, what we still do is submit them to the CR regardless. So if, for example, if the, if the conservation commission were to elect to take possession, and we had this discussion, we would actually create two separate, um,
Classes.
Yeah, thank you, open space A, open space B. Because no matter what, we've represented, we're giving that to, under a conservation restriction. But one would be held entitled, and, um, this is where the septic is, this is where the storm is. So we literally do something like that. And then all of the back portion would be open space B.
That's what's been discussed.
That's correct.
Okay. Do you have any other questions, Larry?
No, none in this, thank you.
Oh, Woody? Leslie? Uh, George?
No questions.
Okay, great. Um, okay, um, let's just talk about possible conditions for approval, noting what Joe has talked about with regards to stormwater management and the treatment of the runoff. Martha, do you want to just kind of touch on some of those possible constructs, you would see them?
Um, well, I think, based on, on, um, you know, Joe's, Joe's concerns, um, basically a condition would be essentially what, what, you know, Attorney Mann and Steve had said before, which was that each of the, each of the lots would be submitted, exclusive use areas when the houses were designed, would be submitted to the board for review and approval to make sure that it's consist, they're consistent, the development is consistent with the.
Actually, I don't think we're talking the board, it'd be more of a, it's more of a technical by nature, so it would be the plant, it would be Martha, for you, and also the, the technical agent, if it would be Joe, him. Uh, 'cause there, he's the one who's sort of reviewed the detail of the stormwater and how it works, and he'd be the one probably to review it to make sure it meets the intent of the drainage system and such.
Right.
So I would think we, you know, we'd have to open up a public meeting for each lot.
I'm not, I'm not thinking a hearing, but the board may want to, you know, to discuss and get input from Joe to make, you know, to have that discussion, so it's not totally outside of,
Yeah.
of the board.
So that would be one potential con- condition.
Right.
Other, other conceptual things we need to consider?
Well, I think Larry had touched on one earlier, in terms of performance guarantee.
Right.
And quite honestly, I know the draft decisions do have some conditions contemplated in them, and I'm blanking on what they are right now.
Turn to Brian to see if he can fill in the unblank.
Well, so there, there are a number of conditions in the draft decision, but remember when we wrote it, we hadn't gone through the design and engineering phase. So what's missing from it is, is the technical elements that you've discussed tonight. So I've written down, um, you know, we have an updated plan, so that's gonna have to get incorporated into the decision, because it shows new site features that, that we didn't have before. Um, we're gonna confirm that there's an all-native seed mix. We're gonna get the square footage calculations on the detention pond, so we can, uh, We're going to get the square footage calculations on the detention pond, so we can back that out. The planting mix will be, you know, part of the landscape plan as a condition. Light at the entryway, I don't know where you ended up with that, but I have that on my list. Obviously, the, some of the more mechanical things, like the performance guarantee, how the open space is being offered and conveyed, and how the different classes of open space are being treated, that's all set forth already in the decision. So the way we had drafted it originally has been more refined. So now that we put it to paper, and sort of, you know, went back and forth on it, some of the mechanical things that weren't sort of settled, we've now figured out. So how that all works, who does what, and when, that's all in there. So those operational things, we had already worked out, but now we have the design, you know, factors. So if there's anything else that the board would want to see as draft, so you can have a look at how it would work and how it reads, let us know, and we can put that in.
Larry, is your feeling that we should look at this as a one-step process, then?
If there's nothing to be gained by putting them through the, you know, the subdivision control, it would seem to make sense. And Brian, you're comfortable that we have the authority to do it this way?
Yes, and I'm hesitating, because we're in some uncharted territory here. You know, Attorney Mann has advocated this as a condominium form, and as you know, your bylaw typically contemplates an OSRD subdivision, which this is not. So the way your bylaw is written, it all goes in the subdivision direction. So we're a little bit in uncharted territory, but I am comfortable that the substance is all included, and that's what I think is the most important thing. Substantively, you've gotten everything you would have gotten per Joe in a subdivision application or a site plan application in this process. So the process is less important to me than the substance. And I think we've got there.
George, I want to make sure that you were able to hear that discussion?
Yes, I could. I could hear everything.
Wonderful. That being the case, I just want to kind of get your opinion, if you thought it would make sense for this to be a one-step process or a two-step process?
Two-step process.
Okay. Okay, so you would think of the rolling this out as a subdivision plan secondary?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Leslie, I want to ask you your opinion, if you thought that this would be best handled as a one-step process or a two-step process?
I think going with a two-step process is probably more beneficial.
Okay. Woody, I want to kind of get your sense of whether you would feel that this would be a one-step process or a two-step process?
I think it should be a two-step process. I think it would be, give us more control, make sure that things are going as they said.
No?
Where my confusion lies, I mean, all I guess is, the, a two-step process would be better, but with, I don't know who this question is for either, but what is the timeline of all of this? If the, this project goes, they break ground, like what, how long does that, all of this last? As far as from start to finish, with each condominium unit, if they're all custom-built homes?
You mean the construction?
Yes.
Process, or you mean the public hearing process?
Construction process.
I can't answer that.
That would be a kind of a question for the applicant, if you just want to give kind of a ballpark. I think Woody's just looking for what would a typical construction project look like for this?
I guess as far as, is there confusion about the two-step?
We are getting a little confused.
No, so Woody's asking a question that is separate from.
Separate from the.
So I understand, we do want to go back to the two-step process, but notwithstanding any of that, so with regard to the homes, it depends. It's just like in a subdivision, it depends on the market, it depends upon where the housing market is. The actual street will go in immediately, which would bode towards your question relative to the covenant, because we would actually be willing to put in the road before we started our construction, so we can do that performance aspect. And we can, Brian and I can handle that in the body of the decision. But that's, I wish I could tell you, but I can only tell you for the actual infrastructure, which would take.
Probably within a month.
The road.
In utilities.
Yeah.
Probably four weeks.
All right.
Well, and then we have the overlaying of the, the total process will take a year. It'll take a full year to put down, you have to put down your base, you have to put down your gravel, let it sit, then you do your base, then you come back and put your final. So that'll be at least, you know, you'll have, you'll have a base coat, and you won't put your final until all the homes are done.
Yeah.
So you're talking probably 12 months for everything, so that it looks like, you go out and it looks like a street.
Just to help with that, and Martha, you can help me with this one. Wilshire, they're just finishing their last home on that project now, right?
I believe so, yes.
That project started, how many years ago?
Oh, my goodness, that was probably 20, might have been 2011, actually.
That would have been a 10-year project. And so those, in that particular situation, those homes were built as someone said, I wanted to buy this lot, and then negotiated with the builder to then build the home.
Build the best of all.
That's just it. And so these might roll out the same way, based upon what's driving it.
Yeah, the market and everything.
Is that accurate?
Yeah.
We hope to God it's not 10 years. Yes, that's accurate.
Okay. So what I want, okay, thanks.
Sorry for the silence.
No, no, so what I want to go back down to is whether, you know, our decision that we're looking at, because we have most of the subdivision plan requirements already addressed through the reviews that we've gone through, through this public hearing, I want to bring back to the, does it make sense to open another public hearing to then look at a subdivision application? So that's, I guess I want to frame it in that minute. Does that make sense, Larry?
Yeah.
Okay. So with that framing, that's the question I have for you.
No, it doesn't make sense.
It does not make sense.
No, so we would want to do a, we would want to do a one-step process here, because we've vetted a lot of the subdivision process already.
Okay, great. With that clarification, do you understand my question now, Leslie?
I do. I do. With all, yeah, like what you just said, with all the vetting, with all the work that's been laid out in front of us, with the.
Peer review.
Yeah, peer review. To, probably the one step.
Okay, all right.
I changed my mind on it, not that.
No, I just wanted, I wanted, what I wanted to do is, I wanted to frame it so that we understood the process. And George?
Yes, the student's explanation and expansion of that one-step process is mine.
Okay, all right, okay.
Yeah, that's not right. No.
Excuse me, the board is now in discussion, okay? The board is in discussion. So if I hear the polling correctly, to direct Martha and Brian, what I'm hearing is, the decision would look around, look around a single decision.
Integrated.
Integrated decision, since our peer review has looked at the components, that would be appropriate for a site plan if it were to be incorporated, or if it were to occur. Okay.
I understand.
Okay. That being the case, Martha, I would then ask that you and Brian work on that approach, and then have an opportunity, a draft decision for us to take a look at on our next meeting. And if I understood you correctly, you indicated that you had pretty much both decision frames almost, about 90% in the pipeline.
That's correct, and there's an assumption here, and I was just going to ask for a clarification.
Yes.
Those decisions can be finalized, assuming that there isn't any more evidence coming in. If it's a moving target, obviously, we have to keep updating. So I don't want to put words in anyone's mouths, but my understanding from hearing the applicant is, they're not anticipating submitting any new evidence or testimony. So I think as far as the evidentiary portion of the public hearing.
Right.
It seems like we've got everything we need to finalize the decision, but you may wish to just nail that down.
Just other than the light, adding a light on the plan.
But that would be a condition of the final submission.
So basically, the plan that we have is what we're, this is it. We won't have any revisions, modifications, changes, nothing of substance.
Nothing of substance at all, it's as you just discussed.
Okay, great. Okay, beautiful, that's helpful information. Okay, Martha, I think that's, and Brian, I think that's the direction that we will go in then.
Okay.
Okay?
So, all right. We won't anticipate any new evidence or testimony, so the public, you know, evidentiary portion will be done at a hearing. And you can consider the written decision and deliberations. So it still is a special permit, so you can close and consider it, or, you know, however you want to handle it. But I just wanted to nail that down, that we're not anticipating anything else.
I think we should close the public hearing tonight.
Okay.
That starts the clock on getting the decision finalized, right?
Yeah. I mean, we, there's a long clock for a special permit. We don't need that amount of time. I mean, you'll have it for your next meeting.
Draft decision?
Yes. Yeah.
Then I will move to close the public hearing.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, wonderful. Discussion on the motion, discussion on the motion, George, any discussion on the motion?
No, no discussion.
Okay, Leslie, discussion on the motion?
None.
Discussion on the motion, Woody?
None.
Discussion on the motion, Larry?
No.
Okay, how do you vote on the motion, George?
Yes.
Wonderful. Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Larry, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
And the chair also votes in the affirmative. Wonderful. Okay, so let's figure out when we're going to continue this hearing, and that will be continued in a, no.
Here, here, pause.
When we're going to have our next meeting to discuss.
Put it on your agenda to discuss the decision.
Thank you for the clarification, because we just closed it. Yes. When does that look best on our schedule, Martha?
Well, our next meeting is scheduled for October 6th. And the one after that is scheduled for October 20th.
So today is the 15th. Does the 6th give you enough time to do what you need to do? That's three weeks.
It's enough time for me. I am, however, scheduled to be on the other side of the state that night.
Okay.
But I don't want that to get in the way of progress, so it's up to you.
The other option would be the 20th, is that right?
Right, unless you wanted to reschedule the 6th to the 13th, or something like that.
What if we, what if we left it on the second Wednesday as to not confuse ourselves?
Right.
Okay. And so that way, if anything new comes in that needs to be addressed, it could also take place on the 20th. Okay? So I would entertain a motion that we have our next discussion regarding this for the, we don't even take a motion, do we?
No.
We can just put it on our business.
Put it on the agenda.
Let's put it on our agenda, then, for the 20th of October, and it can float on any time. Is that correct, Martha?
That's correct.
Beautiful.
To review the draft decision.
Correct.
Brian, you can make it that night?
Yes, I can. And you're anticipating that that will likely be a Zoom meeting?
Yes, that will be, yes.
A Zoom meeting?
Okay.
But it will be posted on the agenda, but that's the anticipation.
I want to thank everybody who came tonight for the public hearing. Thank you for your participation.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Great. Let's see, on our agenda, Martha, do I have anything left on the agenda that we did not discuss?
I think we let most of it out.
I don't see any old business that's necessary, okay? And our next meeting, then, will be?
October 6th.
October 6th? Do we have things?
Yeah, the same.
We do, actually. They're, Adam True would like disbursement of some funds from the tripartite agreement, and we're also going to be working with the treasurer to close out some of the escrow accounts, so we'll need votes from the board.
Okay.
On some of those things.
All right. Beautiful. And then we'll probably look at some minutes, then?
Yes.
Beautiful, all right. And I see next to old business, I say that word, none, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, wonderful. Larry, do you have anything else?
I do not, no.
George, do you have anything else?
I do not.
Woody? Leslie?
No.
Okay. I only have positive wishes for our missing member.
Yes.
And strength, yes. That being the case, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second then.
Wonderful. Discussion on the motion, Woody, discussion on the motion?
None.
George, discussion on the motion?
None.
Wonderful. Leslie, discussion on the motion?
No.
Larry, discussion on the motion?
No.
Okay. How do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Wonderful. How do you vote, George?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Wonderful. Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Great, and the chair's in favor as well. Thanks very much, everyone. We appreciate you coming by.